All right, first up, we have item 2.01, Creative Entourage Agency Update.
Good evening. Thank you for giving us this opportunity to present this data. Proud and happy to introduce Jennifer Volk. Jennifer is the president, CEO, founder, I think, of Creative Entourage. You may recall that the board, a handful of months ago, entered into an agreement with Creative Entourage to engage our community. Engage our community through telephone polling as well as a survey. The engagement is broad in some natures, but very specifically, though, we asked Creative Entourage to focus on the potential bond referendum in April, as well as a potential full waiver of the Prop C rollback. And so through that work, through that polling, through those surveys, we've gathered some data, and tonight Jennifer's here to present that data to you. Jennifer, thank you.
Good evening. Thank you all for having me this evening. I'm gonna open this up real quick. Okay, so I am excited to present your survey results tonight. We actually conducted two surveys for the district. There was a 400 sample telephone survey, and then there was also an online survey. And so a lot of boards want to know kind of what's the difference between those? And what's the difference in the data that we're getting? And so we, as a company, typically look at that phone survey as your decision-making tool. We have scientific significance to that. We have margin of error with that, and we have a good sample size to be able to say, these results will hold, and we know that we had a good sample. The online survey are opt-in. So anybody can decide to take the survey, and you don't get that random sample effect. And so while we had over 1,900 completed surveys, we put more weight in that 400 sample phone survey. The online survey was promoted via text, social media, the website, and allowed anybody that wanted to provide their feedback to provide their feedback. The results were pretty similar. The biggest difference that we found was in the category of undecided on some of these, and that's because when you're taking a phone survey, we can ask people, do you support, not support? Was there strong support, lean support? And so we're able to kind of hone them in on an answer. Whereas an online survey, they have to pick an option. And so that was really the only difference that we saw once we did those results together. So tonight, I'm going to be focusing on the phone survey, but I do have the electronic survey results here as well, if you have questions about that. So this gets a little bit, and I apologize, a little bit more on why people were undecided online. And it shows you that on the phone survey, we're telling them they have to make a choice. And then on that online survey, they can choose undecided. We've also found through our work through the years that undecided oftentimes is a nice way of saying no, and not having to say that you're against something. And so that's usually where we put those, when we get those on a survey. So when we look at who we heard from, we had 67% that do not have kids under 18, and then 32% did. That small sliver there is about the 2% that were unsure if they had children or not. And then when we look at the undecided, you can see there is about 33% from north, 33% from Lee's Summit, and 26% from west. That area in the gray, again, was undecided, or they weren't sure which area of the community they lived in. We always like to find out what people just think about the district in general. And we start with asking what they think about public education here in Missouri. And you can see that about 41% gave it a grade of an A or a B. And when you look at your district, it went all the way up to 78%. And so that's a high number. That shows that there's a high level of satisfaction with your schools. People are happy with what you're doing. Next, we get into those questions about the proposal and about your local schools in general. And this question was... Hold this up real quick. So we asked people whether they strongly agreed, somewhat agreed, or strongly or somewhat disagreed with these statements. What we found through these is that people really value your schools, and they also value their property values. This does differ from district to district. But if you look at the fact that people move into our district because of its great quality. For our community to continue to grow and be successful, we have to support our schools. To see an almost 92% agreement with a statement is pretty strong. And so people really value the success of your schools here. If you look at the next two, you can see that they're really wanting to support that, and they also find that it protects their property values. And so that's another thing to keep in mind. People see the need, and there is not a high level of tax aversion here. So if you look at that question where it says, "People like me can't afford higher property taxes, no matter how good the cost," you had 56% of people disagree with that. I'm sorry, 56% agree with that statement, okay? So we're not seeing a huge anti-tax sentiment, or that number would be higher. So next, we actually got into questions about your district. And so what people thought about Lee's Summit. They want to make sure that you're taking care of what you have and taking care of your buildings. And so they think that you're doing a great job of keeping your buildings up to date. They think that it's important to keep up with those instructional technology and make sure you have good technology in your schools. High-quality instruction, you'll notice that that also ranked high a little bit later as well, with 83%. I want to note, you'll see there's some breaks there, where we talk about there's green, and then we go to blue. Those are just break points of where things went from excellent and good and got a little bit lower. Safety and security ranked a little bit lower than we see in some districts. Sometimes we'll see that a little bit higher, just as far as the ranking of the list. But overall, you can see that they really value the keeping the school buildings up to date and then keeping current with technology. Next up, we asked them about the priorities for improvements. So as you're moving forward, what do you, what do they want the district to work on and focus on? And so the question that was asked for that was, "Let's assume the Lee's Summit School District had additional funds, but not enough to meet all of the needs. For each item I read, let me know if it's a, what priority on a seven-point scale." A seven is a very high priority, and a one is a very low priority, okay? So you can see here, accessibility is really important. Going back to those staff salaries and making sure that your staff is taken care of, again, was a high priority. Updating your safety and security, future ready classrooms and labs, those were really the areas that people are seeing as important. So when you're looking at facility updates and you're looking at improvements, you know these are the areas that your community is finding important. Next up, we asked about the possible proposal. And so we asked about both the bond issue and your Prop C rollback. So when we said, "Our kids need the same educational opportunities as those in our neighboring districts, it's important that we provide our educators with the facilities and the resources they need." 95% strongly agree. That's a lot when we look at a statement for a number to be up in the high 90s like that. When we asked about just the investment that people, that you have made in your school buildings and how we need to protect that investment and keep those buildings in good operating condition, 93%, so another. That often ties with that property value question that I mentioned at the beginning. And then if we get into school pride, and they're proud of this district, and they're proud of where they live, and we need to take care of that, you're at a 90%. Again, with this, the top one goes a little bit back to that tax sentiment, and it's relatively low compared to some other districts we've worked with. With the cost of everything going up, it only makes sense that our district needs more funding to keep up with salaries and programs. 74% strong agree. And then eliminating the Prop C rollback, our district will have the full use of the tax rate that was approved by voters. 70% agree with that. And you'll notice, the more we start talking about dollars, and the more we start talking about Prop C, and we start talking about numbers, that strongly agrees go down, and that's pretty common. A lot of times, people have a harder time understanding exactly what these proposals are. And they tend to tie more to how it's going to impact their families and how it's going to impact their students in school. When we asked them how, the fact that you're only one of 25 that haven't passed the Prop C rollback, there wasn't a ton of support behind that. It was like, okay, with that 65%. Okay, and then when we asked, "With all that's going on in Jackson County, now's not a good time to consider the proposal," you're only at 55%. So I think people see the need, and they're not too worried about some of those outside influences that may be out there. So next up, we actually ask about the proposals. And so we ask these questions a few times and a few different ways. At the start of the survey, it's one of the first questions after we ask about Missouri and the district, those A and B questions. We ask them about the Prop C rollback, and then we ask them about the bond issue. Then they go through all the questions, and they learn a little bit more about the district. They learn a little bit more about maybe some of the challenges that you're facing. And then we ask them the question again. That's called a reconsideration. What that tells us is if we educate people, let them know about the need, and make sure they're informed, are we able to shift that needle? In some cases, we'll see something like this. We're on the first question, we're at a 49% favorability. And then at the end, might jump up. And in some, it might go down, and in some, it might stay the same. When we see it go up, that tells us that if we continue to educate people and make them aware about it, we can shift that needle. If it's flat, then it's going to be harder to shift that needle. So when we first asked about the Prop C rollback, you had a 49% favorability, with 8.2 of those respondents strongly favoring. Then we followed up with the cost information. So here's how much it will actually cost you. And so for this one, we asked, "For a home valued at $300,000, the proposal would raise taxes about $86 a year, or about $7 a month." So we found out that then the favorability went down once they found out how much it was going to cost. Now, at the end of the survey, when we went back again, it actually went up to 59%. And so you can tell that needle, once they learned about it, they understood it, and they were willing to support it, and that went up. And you can notice your strongly favor went up by 10%, which is a big jump. Next up, we look at the bond issue. The first time that was asked, we were at a 61% favorability. And then the follow-up was letting them know that it would not increase their tax rate. And it went up to 76%. So once they learned that it wasn't going to impact their taxes, your support went up for that. Now, when we look at that reconsideration at the end, all the way up to 82% on the favorability for the bond issue. So I will say it's a really high number. And so you've got, there's some good rationale. If you have some facility needs, that this may be a good time to move forward with that. At the end, when we look at those two questions, so you're sitting at about a 59% favorability on the Prop C, 82% on the bond issue. And so now you kind of have some data points to make some decisions from. So I'd love to answer any questions you had. I know I went through that a little bit quick, but happy to dive into details and get into any questions you might have.
Board Member Johnson?
Just a quick question. When I look at slide number eight, if the numbers don't add up to 100%, is it just because some people didn't answer?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Let me see, which one was eight? Yep, that's exactly why, because there was an "other don't know" on there, and so that'd be why.
Okay, thank you.
No problem.
Did you have another question? Does anyone else have any additional questions? Okay.
All right.
All right, well, thank you so much for the presentation.
If you have any later on, let us know. We've got lots of data here, so.
Oh, Jennifer?
Sorry, I just, I was wondering...
Oh, would you come back up here?
Absolutely.
Thank you, sorry. It just came to me. I'm just curious, when you do surveys like this, like, and you said, you know, those numbers are high and things like that. I mean, in general, are the numbers that we received on this survey, I mean, they're, what do you typically see, I guess, when you're asking some of these questions to other districts?
Completely depends on the district. I have seen, so for the slide I have up here right now, I, the lowest bond issue consideration, I think, that I've seen on this was low to mid-40s. This is one of the higher ones that I've seen. It's rare to see them in the 80s. 70s aren't as uncommon, 60s are pretty common.
Thank you. I just wondered if there was like a typical kind of threshold?
Kind of where it goes, yeah.
Thank you so much.
Yep, this is high.
And if you don't mind, I want to add in. Prop C would be, if it's an election, that has to be a 50% plus one. The bond issue is more than, it's 57... .4% yes vote you need for. So they do have a different threshold in an election to pass as well.
And this, and this polling has about a 5% margin of error? So up or down 5% from what you see here?
No problem.
All right, we do have some additional questions now?
Okay.
Vice President Eslic?
Thank you for the presentation. I was just curious, is it your group that writes the questions, and you just get kind of like the overarching request for how to tailor the questions?
We do write the questions. So we conduct input sessions with your community, and we learn about the district a little bit more, learn about what some of those things people are talking about. Then we also meet with district officials and figure out what you want to learn about. There's a lot of questions we can ask. And then, yes, our team does write the questions.
Gotcha. I was just, I was mainly kind of curious about how the Prop C questions are worded, like especially the one about having full use of the tax rate. Simply because Prop C is so confusing in general to so many people.
Yes.
And, like, I understand you're trying to ask a simple question. And I'm just sitting here thinking about how Prop C came to be in the first place, and some people probably don't even know that. But, I mean, I think, I just think that question, to me, is a little bit misleading if you know about the history of Prop C. So I just struggle with that question, but I understand you're trying to ask kind of simple. And, you know, the reason why I'm saying that is because Prop C was put in place to try and offset property tax. That was the whole purpose of Prop C, was to take sales tax revenue and provide a burden relief to taxpayers in the form of kind of a refund to their property taxes, allowing essentially a use tax, and in the form of sales tax, to offset a burden. So it's kind of a little misleading to say that, you know, Prop C is going to then allow a full realization of a tax rate because voters also approved tax relief. So I know that's complicated, and you can't certainly sum all of that history up in a survey, but I just, just personally, when I took the survey myself, I was like, that's kind of a sticky question. But that's just my personal opinion. I don't, and also, Jennifer, I don't know if, is this an opportunity for the board to have any commentary or dialogue amongst us? If there's anybody who wants to just say anything about this? But in lieu of not just asking questions? Or are we going to have another opportunity to talk about that?
If you're talking about the survey itself?
Yeah, sure. I just didn't know if anybody, I didn't know if we wanted to open that up to anybody. That's, that was my only question, is if people didn't have any specific questions to ask, but if the board members had anything they wanted to say, I guess. I didn't know if you wanted to...
Yeah, I mean, I guess now would be the time, since it is a work session, and then as the topic is the survey. But also, we do have the next item up, which is the committee update, which will go kind of further in-depth on what the committee actually was talking about in regards to the results that they got from the survey as well.
Sounds good. I don't have any more questions, though, thank you.
I'll also add, just with the Prop C, that first time, when we asked about the proposal, it had a little bit of education in there on what that Prop C rollback was. So on the first question, it was, "While no decision has been made, the district is considering a proposal to fully waive the Prop C rollback. Prop C is a state law requiring school districts to roll back their tax rate in return for state sales tax revenue. District voters approved a partial waiver in 2008. A Prop C waiver would add about 15 cents to the district's tax rate." So they at least got a little bit of education, but it's confusing. And even as we've tried to simplify it, it's a tricky one.
Yeah, definitely. Thank you.
No problem.
Board Member Haley?
Yes, I'd like to revisit slide 12 just for a minute, please.
Sure.
I want to make sure I understand that correctly, because it says, "Statements about a possible proposal." It says 55% strongly agree that now's not a good time to consider a ballot proposal. It seems like we blew kind of right by that and got up with 82%. People think it's a great idea, so seems like there's a disconnect there. Can you explain that to me, please?
Sure. So with the 55% there, a lot of times, we'll look at how it's ranking amongst other things in your survey. So this was the one that had the lowest percentage of people who strongly agree with that statement. As far as the why that one would be different than the bond issue, not exactly sure. I'd need to dig into that and check with some of our statisticians to see the exact discrepancies there. But I will say that there are times in other district surveys where I've seen that number in the 70s and 80s.
Well, it seems like to me, just looking at this on the surface, that slide right there says a whole lot more than the slide that says 80%. Because this says 55% of people don't even think we should put it on the ballot. Am I misunderstanding that?
Not misunderstanding, I'm trying to figure out the right way to phrase the response. We would put more weight in the actual question where we explain what the proposal is and how it's going to impact the school district, because they have more data to make that decision off of, whereas this is a generalized statement about a ballot proposal. So.
If that's, if that's the answer, I mean, I'm, I'm just looking for the answer.
Yep.
I mean, it just seems to me, this is a more comprehensive answer than the other one, though.
We, when we're doing surveys, and when we compare our surveys to the election results, we look at the questions that actually talk about the proposal as a whole, rather than just general sentiment about what people think's going on in the county.
Was this question asked before the education and the questions about the specific measures?
Right in the middle. So they would not have known this the first time they answered. They would have known this before the reconsideration.
Thank you.
No problem.
All right. Does anyone else have any additional questions?
This is for you, President Foley. Did you say, did I hear you right, that we're going to have, we're going to discuss more? Is that what Vice President Eslic mentioned?
Yeah, I mean, we can discuss it right now, since it is a work session. So if there's questions or discussions that we want to have about the survey, then we can.
And there'll be, again, another topic today, but early December, whatever CAC, they may or may not recommend one or two of these, right? And we'll have a work session early December. And then the second meeting, a regular meeting in December, you'll vote on a ballot language if we put something on the ballot. So you're going to have many chances. This is kind of a first-rent cycle, if you will.
I just, I do have one more question then, while we're here. How was, was everybody in the community given an opportunity to survey or be surveyed? I just wanted to make sure that was clear.
Yes, especially on the online, since it was an opt-in. Everybody had the chance to take that.
The online went to, we went, the company went and got phone numbers associated with registered voters and sent it to everybody that had a phone number associated, which is about 2/3 of registered voters in our community have a phone number attached to the registered voter. And they received a text with my name, which is weird, because I got it myself. David, this is Dr. Buck. And so, but yes, everybody who's a registered voter and has a phone number attached to it, got the online or text survey. But the phone call, they randomly pick, and they just keep going until they get 400 completed. And that's just how Gallup polls, everybody else does polls as well. They just keep randomly picking net numbers, and they call until they get the number they need completed.
Thank you.
Board Member Myers?
I just had one thing, and I'm not trying to put you on the spot, because you might not even know, but historically, I'm looking at slide five, where we grade the state versus ourselves. And typically Gallup polls are usually that way, right? Where people are, oh, this is terrible, but my local community is great, right? So is this 78%? Like, is this actually a really good number for right now? Or is this a lone, or do you have any idea as, how people are kind of seeing this today?
From the surveys we do, this is a great number. So a lot of times, we'll see this in 60s. I've seen a couple that were in the 80s, but this is, this is a good high number based on the ones that we've done in the past two or three years.
Thank you. And then one other thing that might, not necessarily, this might be more of a comment to Board Member Haley. The perhaps, and I don't, we don't want to argue this for the next half hour, but the Jackson County, just the way that was worded, the, hearing the, in spite of what's going on in Jackson County, or however that slide reads, perhaps that was kind of a little bit of a triggering language or a leading language for some that are automatically, you know, they're frosted anyway, and so, I mean, I, and we can talk about that later, but that was just kind of how I interpreted that.
Okay, Vice President Eslic?
I would agree on the question about, well, multiple questions were that way, but that's not why I push my button. I'm just curious, do you track, once you give feedback like this about certain proposals, do you kind of follow the process and see what happens? Like, if your information and your prediction was kind of accurate once people put that on the ballot in certain communities?
Absolutely. So we do that with every survey that goes on the ballot that we do. As long as the messaging is followed, and then there's no massive thing, so a scandal within the school district, something like that, tends to be within four to five percentage points of Election Day. A lot of times, it's more narrow than that, but on average, it's four to five.
Yeah, so either direction, right?
Right.
Okay. Okay, I appreciate it, thanks.
Okay, thank you. So now, I just want to share with the board members that this same presentation that was given to us tonight was also given to the Citizens Advisory Committee. Two days ago? Tuesday, my week is a blur. So the Citizens Advisory Committee did have time to hear the same presentation, ask very similar questions, and then discuss what that means and how that might affect a recommendation. So just so you know, as we're moving forward, they did have that opportunity to, to consider these things. All right, thank you.
Great, thank you.
And with that, we have item 2.02, Citizens Advisory Committee Update.
Once again, thank you for this opportunity. As you know, Citizens Advisory Committee is a, is a committee of the board. It's led by two co-chairs, Stephen Hill, who I'll introduce here in just a moment, and Elaine Blummel. And then there's an executive committee as well, that helps in the leadership role of that. But we are very fortunate to have strong leadership by, by Mr. Hill. And we'll turn over, turn the mic over to him.
Good evening, everybody. Good to be here, and really glad for the opportunity to come before you and talk about some things that we've been very busy at working at. I want to go back and just talk a little bit about our committee. We're made up of citizens, obviously, throughout the Lee's Summit R7 School District. And we range from parents that no longer have children in the district to parents that are hopeful to have children in the district. So we try to really just take on the full plethora of people that, that might be concerned about things that are going on in the district and want to be involved. So what we have essentially been charged with is kind of putting the cart before the horse. So we started working on this several months ago. And knowing the experience that we've had within our committee, knowing the sentiment of the district and how the district will back most, most everything that comes to education, we proceeded under the thought process that we more than likely would be able to present something that's going to be able to affect our district in a positive manner. I've been in the district for about 28 years and had three children that have gone through. The only time that I can recall that there hasn't been support of something that was put before the district was back in 2008. And that was during the housing crisis and all of the problems that we were having financially as a company, as a country. And a, and a vote was put before the community, and that, again, that was the only time that it wasn't supported. Since then, we've been very successful at getting backing and getting everybody to buy in on what the district is trying to do. What I find very interesting is the survey that we saw, there was a portion in that that talked about the district, the citizens wanting to make sure that we provide the upkeep and that we keep our district, our buildings, in good manner. And our, and another thing that I didn't hear come up was just a discussion about teacher salaries and being competitive. So we've got a lot of people that are very committed and are very interested in us remaining one of the top districts in the state. So I guess the next question is, where do we go from here? Well, as, as we said Tuesday, we, we looked over this presentation and kind of were right where you guys are right now. were right where you guys are right now. So we're gonna meet again very quickly, and talk about, okay, we've got a bond issue, we've got a Prop C, what is the right time, and if it is the right time for either of those, what do we recommend to be put before you guys, so that you could then make a final decision? So really, our, our work appears to be just beginning, but we've been at it for a little bit, and hopefully here, soon, by the end of December, we'll have something before you that you're able to really put some thought to, and see what we do. So with that, I, I don't know if there are any questions for me about the committee, or how we operate, or anything like that, but I'm gonna stick around for a little while.
I'm going to actually reverse in the, in the slides, because I want to take you back to something, and Mr. Hill referenced it. This part of the survey was very interesting to me, as, as I have been part of this work that we've done, because we've been working based off of work that was done a year ago, and I'll talk about that here in just a moment, in, in the CFMP process, the Comprehensive Facility Master Plan. That group, that group of, of well over a hundred and fifty people came up with priorities. And it's interesting, the priorities that the CFMP group came up with, and looking at what's on this slide, number one, ADA accessibility, paying teachers wasn't part of our discussion, upgrading safety and security, providing future-ready learning labs, providing classrooms that support best practices, repairing aging conditions in, in the buildings, and upgrading career educational facilities. I find this very interesting, and not tied, not, this, this wasn't part of our discussion as we went through the building of the survey. So I just highlight that off of the survey, prior to getting into an update as to where the work that we've been doing. So the charge, as Mr. Hill has, has very clearly stated, is that the C, the CAC is going to bring forward a recommendation to you, in some way, shape, or form, some manner, at the, at the beginning of December, on what to do with Prop C, as well as what to do with the twenty-five, twenty-five bond. As was stated, we have eighty-seven members, sixty-two community members, and twenty-five staff members. The Comprehensive Facility Master Plan was developed last year, it's a continuation of a CFMP that's been in existence for a long time. This link will take you to the executive summary from the work that we did last year. We had fifty members on that team at the district level, and another hundred and twenty in nine different buildings, building-level teams doing their work. The charge that came out of that group was about stewarding innovative, future-ready learning solutions for all LSR seven schools, while maintaining character, creating parity within existing assets, to provide students and staff with safe, secure, equitable learning environments that lead to student success. And then now, take a look at this slide. Thinking back to that survey, and the results of that survey, these are the priorities that that group came up with a year ago. ADA accessibility, safety and security, future-ready learning spaces, infrastructure upgrades, programmatic improvements. I find it very interesting, how the correlation between the work that was done last year, and the results of that survey are so closely matched. They also said at that time, if you're gonna do it, do it. Fully invest in the projects, whatever projects you do, fully invest in those projects. And then also, they gave us some ideas, if, you know, when you, whatever dollar amount you have to spend on, out of the capital budget, this is how we think you should spend it. Fifty-two percent on major renovations and improvements, twenty-eight percent on maintenance and repair, and then twenty percent of that, of that overall spend on equipment. So this is the work that we've been doing, as Mr. Hill has said, we've been working on this for quite some time. It started last May at Greenwood Elementary, and we, we just did a general overview at that time. And these are the meetings that I'm gonna, and, and this goes, these go, this goes into greater detail that I'm gonna go into tonight, and this is what we still have yet to do. So what we did in May was just a general overview and kickoff at that time. In August, at Lee Summit Elementary, we talked about our capital needs, what are the needs that we have in this district? And at that time, we identified five hundred and eighty-six million dollars' worth of need. In September, we sat down with our, our fund, our financial underwriter, as well as Mr. Holder, and we identified about three hundred and thirty-three million dollars of what we would think would be available funding for those five years. So we had five hundred and eighty-six million dollars' worth of need, three hundred and thirty-three million dollars' worth of available funding, there's a gap there. Then in October, and between the September meeting and the October eighth meeting, we sat down internally, not the CAC, but internally, and whittled that five hundred and eighty-six down to three hundred and sixty-five. So we were able to identify items within the capital, the projects that we would defer past two thousand and thirty, and got that number down to, down to three sixty-five. At that meeting, we gave the CAC the opportunity to take a list of all the projects, and begin to think about, okay, which would we prioritize? Of the three hundred and sixty-five million, where would we spend our three hundred and thirty-three million? And then what would be left out? Because something's gonna get left out of that equation. On October twenty-second, as was mentioned, Creative Entourage came and made the presentation. We also had a deeper dive into Prop C, and Mr. Holder led us through that discussion. We didn't get a chance to get to design standards. So what's coming next? November sixth, we're getting back together again. Now that we have this information from Creative Entourage, now that we have information from Mr. Holder on Prop C, now that we have our number, three sixty-five, and for needs, three hundred and thirty-three million, we're gonna really roll up our sleeves and get to work. Out of this meeting, we will need to narrow that three sixty-five down to three thirty-three, and then we're gonna, we're gonna sit on that for a while. We're gonna sit on that and come back on the nineteenth, and say, okay, this is the work we did on the, on the sixth, do we like it? We're gonna let, sit back and, and think about it for, give ourselves a couple of weeks. Also, we're gonna identify, at that time, on the Prop C question, what are we gonna do? We're gonna, and if we, if we're gonna do it, what are we going to identify as a priority for those additional funds? The district has lots of needs. If you recall, the second priority on that list from that survey was salary and benefits. That's one need, that, that money could be tied to. I also mentioned that we have way more capital need than we do funding. Could that Prop C rollback money be geared toward capital? Or is there some other very important initiative that the district could target that money toward? So discussions to be had, and that's the process that we're gonna go through on November sixth and November nineteenth. But at that November nineteenth, our goal is to have a final recommendation ready to go for our work session on December fifth. At that time also, we will bring forward some potential ballot language. Ben Thompson at Gilmore Bell has been, we've been working on this already, to kind of start to put some preliminary language together, but at the December fifth meeting, my hope is that we're gonna have, the CAC is gonna have a recommendation for the board, as well as Gilmore and Bell have some potential ballot language that would match that recommendation. And then finally, at the end, on December nineteenth, board decide where to go from That's where I'm gonna stop, and take any questions.
Board Member Miller?
I don't have a question, but I just wanted to just say thank you for the leadership of Stephen and Elaine, leading the CAC. I had the privilege of being on a board representative last year, and it's just such a great opportunity, anytime you can get together with the citizens and stakeholders of our community, and work together, and really dig deep, and that's what the CAC does. I just want to let you know that I appreciate the work that you're doing, and so thank you for your leadership. Dr. Shelton, thank you for coming in, and your leadership as well, so thank you for the great work.
Does anyone have any questions at this point? Thank you. All right, and we will be hearing from the Citizens Advisory Committee again very soon, thank you. Next up, we have item two point zero three, retention and recruitment of staff and hiring practices.
Well, thank you for this opportunity to visit about recruitment, retention, the work we do in, in Lee Summit. I know we talked about this a few years ago at a board retreat, some of these topics, but it sounded like this time was focused more on recruitment, retention, and the things we're doing there, based on the guidance I gave. So really, want to start with just talking about the things we do, and my intent here is to give a twenty, thirty thousand-foot view of our programming, but I have some links where we can go in deeper to how this operationalizes within our district. And I thought I'd start with just talking about our future teachers program. When you talk about recruitment, and retention, and growing teachers, we start in the middle school, and this actually began over a decade ago, when we were doing lots of cool things for cybersecurity and engineering, but we weren't maybe promoting our own field of teacher and education. So we have a future teachers program in the middle schools and high schools, to get our students interested in becoming a teacher and joining the education workforce. Starts in the middle schools, a club program, and also in each of our high schools, as a club program, where they do different activities. That then feeds into two programs that you can engage with your junior or senior year of high school, the Lee Summit Teachers, Lee Summit Teachers Academy, and that's the academy that is at Summit Technology Academy, where our high school students can go in, learn, start their coursework to learn about becoming a teacher. Ashley Turner leads that program, does an amazing job of getting our kids excited and ready to become teachers. And then we also have an early college program, and with that early college program, students can actually start their associate's degree, to go into an education program at Longview during their school day, which is a great advance. So we actually have two paths for, for our high school students to begin their, their teaching career. So another example of how we're recruiting folks, and I put links in there to the webpages to go to those programs if you want further details. Something else that works with our Lee Summit Teachers Academy program is our Grow Your Own program, that the Board of Education approved a few years ago. This is an excellent opportunity for our kids to stay engaged with our school district as they go through college. So in our Grow Your Own program, that Ashley Turner, Dr. Bonnison, Dr. Potts, when he was here, they, they worked diligently to, to put this program into motion. And with this program, our students will apply to be selected, and we, each year, we select twenty-two high school students to be a part of our Grow Your Own program. And with that program, they stay engaged with our, with Ashley Turner and our, and our school district, and then they also have the opportunity for a twenty thousand dollar scholarship upon graduation, and being hired back by Lee Summit Schools. And the board made that commitment, so we're doing twenty-two students each year that are identified for that program. That program has four main components, one is yearly PD, we actually bring these students back to Lee Summit when they're back from college break, when, in the, in the winter, and they spend a day with Ashley Turner, and some leaders in professional development in our district, to learn about our school improvement plans, C, CSEP, what we're working on in our CSEP, the current initiatives for professional development. The feedback from that is always great, because our students will talk about how much they feel ahead of their peers at their university. We also have mentors that are school district teachers in Lee Summit R seven, that are mentoring these students as they go through college, they stay connected with them through School ogy, and stay connected with them as they move through university and college. We also have classroom visits, where they can go to their mentor's teacher class to stay connected, and see what the current things happening in the classroom are. We also ask for them to work for our Lee Summit R seven while they're in college. They can do that during the school year, or during the summer. They can come back and, and work a set amount in our summer school program as a paraprofessional, or they could substitute teach, and we engage with them a lot of ways there, to kind of, one, help them get those real experiences in education, but two, also helps a college student to get some money while they're away. Something else we've done, and really amped up in the last several years, is student-teacher placement, and our student-teacher breakfast. Dr. DeVilbas on our team actually leads the student-teacher work, and she is very diligent in ensuring we place lots of student-teachers. That, for us, we believe is a great pipeline. You know, about a decade ago, as a district, we might place fifteen, twenty student-teachers a year. We are regularly placing about fifty student-teachers a year right now, and also have observations and practicums with other universities as well. We feel like, and, 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 and we have a breakfast then to, one, we say, to get the kids in, to feed them a hot meal, because they're in college and they've been eating ramen for a while. But two, also to talk to them about getting their first job, talk to them about employment in Lee Summit, and what that would look like. But we also are honest with them, that we know we can't hire all of our student-teachers, but we would like you to keep us in mind, if you go to another district, maybe in three, four, six, eight years, come back to Lee Summit and apply, and look for us down the road. We also help them with getting their first job, resume, skills, interview skills, how to do a job search, things like that. We also still visit regional university career fairs. I'm actually going to Pittsburgh State tomorrow, Kansas, they have a great teacher education program there. And we will go to regional universities, as far as University of Arkansas Pine Bluff, and then also KU and UCM, that are right down the road from us, and others as well, North and West Missouri State, Mizzou, all around the area. Another recruitment path for us is our UCM Pathways for Paraprofessionals. This has been a great partnership with UCM, where, and again, you can click on the link and see the UCM page for it, but it's been a great partnership with them, where our paraprofessionals can actually meet with a UCM staff member, do an audit of their transcripts, see where they're at in their bachelor's degree, they may have their bachelor's completed, they may only have half their college, bachelor's completed, and then with that, they'll do an audit, customize a, a program for them to get their degree and their teaching certificate in identified areas. So then, and we, we've been hiring these folks, and they come then right into our workforce to become teachers. Pairs are, are great educators, because they're in the classroom. One person that's a special education teacher for now, right now, I worked with them at Summit Lakes Middle School over a decade ago, fantastic pair, that's now a special education teacher for us. Some other things we've done on the recruitment side is reimagined our Lee Summit R seven careers page, and many of these items here actually are in a partnership with Public Relations, with Katie Bergen, Talia, and their team, to do some work. That, that is one thing that we learned, as we went to conferences, and learned from folks that are doing great work in recruitment and retention, because some of these things work for retention strategies as well, is building your brand, having a strong, positive brand in your school community. One of the survey data that came up earlier aligned directly with, when I go to a career fair, or go out of college to recruit, I always talk to our people about, have a quick elevator speech, that's true to you, honest, where you can connect with one, one of those college students. And mine is something in the effect of, have you heard of Lee Summit? It's a pretty unique place, it's a city of about a hundred thousand people, but the largest employer in Lee Summit is the school district. People choose Lee Summit for great schools and a great community, and then they usually drive into the city or down the road to, to work. And that is a good hook, to say, this is the kind of place that Lee Summit is, which I think we saw some of that same data when talking about the schools and the school district of people that are here, that were surveyed. So we reimagined our careers page, we got some folks on there with quotes, we've tried to make things easier to access and see, we work to feature benefits, things of that nature, so folks can see what, what it's like to, to work here, as they land on our careers landing page. Next, we started, we, the public relations team really did an LSR seven life campaign, and that is on LinkedIn, and I am gonna click on a couple of these, real quick, and I'm hoping my links will work here. So here's an example of one that we did on LinkedIn, and we did some partnerships and work with LinkedIn. Back up real quick. And this is one we did, this is a story about Josh Chin, and you're gonna see in this corner here, LSR seven life, that little tag there is the branding that the public relations team used to connect with it, and Josh Chin... And Josh Chin is someone that was in the military and joined us as a para, used that UCM para to teach our program to then become a teacher for us, is now a teacher at Westview Elementary School. And then we just kind of tell that story about Josh so that other paras and other folks can connect with what that's like, and that's something that they can do as well. Another example, one that got a lot of engagement, is Community for Life. Sarah Fraser, our female industrial technology teacher, which is a diversity area that helps us get better to have females. Typically, industrial technology is a male-dominated profession and course. So this is a link here, again, that branding, and then from here, you can click and go straight to our job postings and job applications. So really putting out their information to build our brand and talk about the great things that happen in being an educator in Lee Summit. I'm going to mention again earlier, but I'm going to talk about it now because we talked about Facebook. Our Public Relations team has also experimented with using boosted job postings. This does cost a little bit of money, but it's relatively affordable to then take jobs where we're having hard-to-feel like para, resource aid, and we'll boost those jobs so they will show up in Facebook areas when they come into the Lee Summit area or different parts of the Lee Summit area based on where their phones are, and they'll show up in their Facebook. Something else we did, and there's more details there, earned media coverage for recruitment. This is something that Talia specializes in. She will actually connect with and earn media coverage from local news stations. One of the more recent ones was, she got, I think it was Channel 9, to go out to transportation to talk about the first day of school, what that looks like, and then what it's like to be a bus driver. Then she'll coordinate for different parts of the transportation team or myself to go out and talk to the media and then out to our community about the advantages of, say, being a bus driver in Lee Summit. We also did some rebranding of targeted job descriptions. So we put out on social media where, rather than just say, "Come be a resource aide", we start targeting it to some folks, "Hey, come be a resource aide at your local community school. Work part-time and make money at your kid's school in their area." And some of those things we'll actually do through our district newsletters or school newsletters as well. You have at your seat, or should, a college recruitment fair flyer. So that flyer is two-sided that shows just a quick snapshot in a colorful way to those folks that we're recruiting, whether it be at a college, university, or even at a job fair somewhere. We can give that to them to give them a quick snapshot of what our school district is and the points that we feel folks will typically want to know about our district and ask about. Just a quick list of different places we post jobs. We use Indeed, LinkedIn, MoReap is the Missouri Regional Education Application Program. So a lot of school districts will use MoReap to find jobs, and some folks will still use those to find those. MoASP, M.A.S.A., MoAsbo, some of those will, so for example, if we posted a business professionals position or a public relations professional position, we will often go to those professional organizations to post those jobs from there as well. I mentioned in the Facebook posts, SchoolSpring is another platform that we use that comes with the technology we use as well as district newsletters. Two others I wanted to mention that come up in board policy and work that the Board of Education has done recently. First, in March of 2022, the board approved policy J E C A. This allows, and was a change that year, to where it allows employees that do not live in Lee Summit to bring their children to our school district. We have currently about 80 students in our district through this policy revision that was done, and it's a great recruitment and actually retention tool because once folks enter our district, you know, if a kid's getting ready to graduate high school and they could maybe resign, retire, they may stay to keep their kids in the school district all the way through graduation. So it's been a great tool for us as well. I'm seeing a boost there. I would also say that the recent change to board policy GCBA, where we give all years of experience for teachers, we're seeing that help us as well. We're hiring lots of retirees from Kansas. We actually have some Missouri retirees that are coming back through critical shortage, and they're coming back making a very strong salary from where they were before as well as recruiting folks from other districts in our region on the Missouri side. So that's a lot about recruitment, and then also about retention. But retention kind of starts when people start working for us. One area that we got feedback on, and we really know that in education, the first three years, three to five years are key to folks having a good experience, and part of that is onboarding people well. So something that we're proud of that we were able to do with partnership with Business Services and the Benefits Department as well as our HR team is create a new hire guide to streamline what can be a long process for our folks. So you see here the table of contents for all the things that a new hire in our district would need to help them have a smooth start to their career in Lee Summit. And these things that light up or kind of go gray or highlight when I turn the page, those are hyperlinked to the things our new hires would need to go to to access those things. Got great feedback on this. Erin Jensen, Dawn Harrison on our teams worked diligently to get this going as well as other members of our team. But it's a great resource for our new hires to help them start well. We also, for our teachers specifically, have, through Kristin Merrill and her department's work, Mentoring and Induction for New Teachers, our mint that supports our teachers in their first three years. And that's, there are state requirements that go along with this, but they work diligently to have a mentor for our new teachers that are starting their career, make sure they get a great start with timely professional development each month throughout the first three years of their, or first year of their career, and then three years annually throughout. I think one of the other things I want to mention is, and I'm going to show some data here in a moment, but our retention is really strong, and part of that is, and our recruitment is strong. And part of that is because our brand is strong. People are very positive about the things happening in our school district and our community. And I always take this opportunity when talking about this subject. The number one recruitment tool typically and retention tool is the stories we tell. And the most important stories are the stories of our teachers and our staff. And that's why it's so important to have things like Team Lee Summit, have collaborative site-based leadership, and have stakeholder input, surveys to get that voice into the room as we do that work. And then that way, we can be responsive to that so our folks can then share that with others. Thought I'd share some data on some of these retention recruitment topics. First, this is data you saw at the HR report. I just thought I'd bring it back as our diversity hiring and the progress we've made there. I know that we gave some other data that was requested at that meeting in August to you as well. This is one you haven't seen before. On the recruitment side, I was trying to think of data that would tell the story. So this is a line graph that you can see from July of 2022 to July of 2023. This is the applications for certified positions, so think teachers, administrators, that come into our district during the 2022-23 school year. So think hiring for the 2023-24 school year. You'll notice there's a big spike shortly after January. Well, that's where we start posting our teaching jobs after we get retirements and resignations. And you'll see we had over 2,900 applications submitted. Well, I just wanted to show you the trend that last year, the 2023-24 school year, that went up to 3,700 applications through the year as well. Something else I'll point out, and you saw this on the other slide, in November, you see the first spike in that line. That's because in the last few years, we've gotten more aggressive with our recruitment, specifically initially with Dr. Kenny and her team in recruiting and hiring in the month of November and December, strong elementary candidates because we know those folks are pulled off the market pretty early, the best candidates, in the winter by neighboring school districts. So we started posting and hiring folks at the start of the year because we know our data shows we're going to have retirements and resignations in elementary classrooms. We hire 40 to 50 elementary teachers every year. Another data point that I think tells the story about retention is this table. And the data, it's not updated yet, but if this goes through 2023, you can see here what we call the Big Six in the Kansas City area. These are the school districts that are over 10,000 students minus KC Mo. They have a different funding mechanism. We don't normally compare to them. But you can see here, we are this darker orange line here. So you can see our teacher turnover is really low compared to our peers in that area. You'll see that everyone had a bump in the 2023, FY23 school year. And we haven't spent a lot of time as to why, but I think we're just, there was just a, happened to be a bump that year for some reason. This one tells a great story is teachers who have not returned to the district and kind of the four general categories, and this comes through Desi's data, so it lets us to compare things with other districts and across the state of Missouri. You'll see for Lee Summit Schools, the largest group of turnover is not a teacher in Missouri anymore. That's because a lot of those folks are retiring. We are fortunate, and I don't want to, one of the best retention tools we have is our retirement system. Always grateful for our Board of Education when they look at their legislative priorities, having a strong retirement system for our employees. Tends to always be a priority. We're grateful for that because that is a great retention tool, especially in Lee Summit, where we are the most competitive in our market at the end of the career for a teacher. Then you'll see in the blue if they took another position in another district. Orange, another position in the same district, or that kind of aqua teal blue if they were, they moved to be a teacher in another district. So this one actually shows and tells the story of the teachers in Lee Summit that leave, where do they go? We can see right now, for, this is graded by the last five years. You can see over the last five years, we've had 11 teachers leave our school district and go to Blue Springs, five to Raytown, four to Park Hill, et cetera. And the different color bands kind of give you an idea as to how many per year. So then the next set we look at is the teachers we're hiring, where are they coming from? You can see that about 34 of them from Independence, and you go on down the list there. Then you'll see Blue Springs, though 11 have left over the last five years, we've actually hired 13 from them. So recruitment, retention, any questions, discussion on the data, on the information I had there? I can go back to any slide if there's more detail, and I can go into the links as well.
Board Member Myers?
Oh yeah, this is my wheelhouse. Hey, I think that that little booklet you all have designed for new hire guide, Holy Guacamole, I wish you would have had that when I came on board, when my desktop didn't work right and I couldn't take a tennis for a week and I got yelled at. I'm like, well, I came in the next day and I had a new desktop. But hey, what about private schools? Don't we, don't we kind of share personnel? None of those were on there. That was a question that I had when I looked at this earlier, like, you know, that we hire people in from private schools and they leave us to go there as well? Is that not significant enough data or, because those were all public school districts? Yeah.
So Desi doesn't tend to collect that data from private schools, so we don't get it? This is all data straight from Desi?
That would answer that question then, because that was the one thing that I, I was just curious as to that. Okay, well, thank you very kindly.
Board Member Johnson?
Okay, I have a few things. So one, I want to say that I did parent-teacher conference this week, and there was a teacher who came from a neighboring district. She had 10 years of experience, and she's recruiting, just to let y'all know. And because she did say that we do an excellent job for our teachers who have the experience with adding that step and adding additional things and having great retirement. So I can echo from someone in the teacher community that that is definitely working. My question is, when it comes to recruitment, of course, being a brown girl, I'm interested in diversity. And when we look at the schools we go to to do recruitment, there are a few HBCUs in the state of Missouri and in neighboring states. How do we pick or how can we decide where we go, or how can we incorporate those in the schools we go to, provided they have college fairs?
Yeah, provided they have college fairs. The other thing we do before we go is ensure that the education program's going to have students graduating to become teachers. So we call ahead before we dedicate resources to that. And that's why we go to the University of Arkansas Pine Bluff. They do a fantastic job. It's a great HBCU. And I'll tell you, they, in a lot of ways, do it better than most. They actually have, one of their department members from the Education Department comes by each year and gives me a sheet of that semester, who's graduating, content info, all that, so we can talk to them specifically. They also have a really strong industrial engineering program. So with that, I will then pull those industrial engineering students over to recruit them to be industrial technology teachers. You know, sometimes I can talk to an athlete and say, "Hey, have you ever thought about maybe coaching and coming and being an industrial technology teacher?" I will say it is hard when you're six hours away. It is shocking, but a lot of the students there, they're not familiar with Kansas City. And then I'll try to like mention Patrick Mahomes and the Chiefs and Arrowhead, and some, maybe one in five, well, oh yeah, I've heard of them, but four out of five are like, yeah, that doesn't move the needle for them either. So what I'll then do also is then talk to those students about coming up to stay with family in the summer and teach summer school with us, that sort of thing.
Okay, that sounds great. I'll be honest, when I came to Kansas City, I was like, "Where?" So I totally get that coming from Philadelphia.
But it's hard for us that live in Kansas City to believe that.
Sorry. Then also, are teach, do teachers go with you to these fairs? Can they talk to someone? I mean, we know you're going to talk about all the greatest and latest of LSR7, but do teachers or do other people go?
Yeah, so assistant principals and principals go. We, there are times rarely we'll take teachers out of the classroom to do it. Some schools, some school districts do that quite a bit strategically. If you're going to UCM, bring a recent UCM grad that's going to see the students. We haven't done a lot of that, but we do send our assistant principals, we'll send our principals to the different schools, especially if they have an affinity connection to that school, maybe they graduated there. Or we have one school we go to that has a strong teacher college, and that principal's child goes to school there. So that helps us get connections into talking to kids and connections to them so that they can hopefully connect back to us in Lee Summit.
Okay, sounds good. I guess the only advice I would get is maybe, we've done such a great job with this piece for LSR7, maybe figure out how to sell Kansas City, so to speak. Thank you.
Board Member Garrett?
Thank you for all this information. I mean, it really does put things into perspective with all the great programs we've got in our school district. And just kind of looking at the data that we had with the teacher turnover, is it common, I don't know, I know this is coming from Desi, and I haven't really looked at this before, but maybe when you were finding the information, is there kind of an ebb and flow between teachers that we're losing and that we're gaining from surrounding districts? Is there, is this common, or is this kind of a unusual thing that, you know, we're losing like to our neighbors to Blue Springs? You know, I don't know if you can speak to that?
Generally, I can. It is common. And know that also, we have an exit survey we do. It was a paper survey. We've now migrated per our C-SIP to an electronic platform that we're getting good feedback from folks on. But it is, and I would say that there's times where just life's in session, you know? I live in Blue Springs, or I live in Raytown, and I want to live in the community where my school, where my school, where my kids go to school. And I'll say this, people come and go from school districts for lots of reasons. Sometimes folks leave our school district because it's not a great fit and the expectations of the principal's not a great match. So there's a lot of reasons people come and go. The exit survey is the best data source for us to look at why they're leaving and the feedback about our district.
And seeing one out of 10 leave us is going to a lateral move, only one out of 10, that's phenomenal data. Most districts would love to have that. You know, you're seeing almost two out of 10 are going for a promotion, whether inside our district or going to another district. That's about half and half of which one. And then, like I said, the vast majority are retiring from here. And we'll see that number go up a little bit of turnover because we're seeing the average hire with more years of experience because we're so strong in our salary schedule and we're given all years' experience, we're seeing a lot more veteran teachers move into LSR7. We're seeing a lot more veteran teachers move into LSR seven, um, because they can, um, have such a better standard of living, plus getting a high quality education. Um, here. So that we are seeing a, a, a more veteran higher group than we had in the past.
I'd like to say that we do it better. So that's why I'm kind of interested and I, you know, think that we're doing good here in Lee Summit. So.
I agree.
Board Member Miller?
Thank you for the presentation. It was wonderful. And I just want to say I love this. Great work. Um, I have just a couple of questions, um, for Grow Your Own, phenomenal program. How many students are, do, do we have, I don't know if you have these numbers, how many students, you already have them? Do we have currently in that program?
So in college, we have 65. We entered 66 and I think we have, uh, 65 of them still in. Um, so we have one more year before a traditional four-year graduation. And if they complete all the things, they come to all of our trainings and do the work experience with us. And, and keep engaged with their mentor, we guarantee an interview, not a hire. Um, and if we hire them, what the board approved is, uh, $2,500 a year for the first four years, 10,000 total of, of, uh, paying off on their college debt. So to help them out as they start off, you know, we all remember this, my first teaching salary was $18,850. You, you ate a lot, ramen noodles. I think I ate more my first and second year of teaching than I did in college. Um, so that will be a great help as they get their career started.
Thank you, Dr. Buck. Um, yeah, the Grow Your Own program is phenomenal. So I'm excited that we, we have that. We have so many great students. I think one of our students actually came back, she's like student teaching or something, or no substitute teaching. And she got teacher, uh, some kind of teacher award, like from the students that they love her. So that's great. Um, what has been the ROI on the visits? So if we're doing, if we're going to recruiting the regional colleges and universities, what's the ROI on that, um, that we've seen?
Yeah. So i- and ROI can mean a lot of different things. It can mean, there, I'll, I'll, I'll describe it mostly as three levels. One is we do want to be at those to make sure that we are promoting our school district to those universities and keeping a presence. Lee Summit has a good name and, and we get a lot of students interested in learning and coming to our school district. Um, then second layer is how many of those then turn into application clicks? And then third is how many do we hire? And as Dr. Buck mentioned, um, the majority of our hires are not first year teachers. Um, for, for variety of reasons, but I'm, that one of that is, uh, you know, we get to hire, we hire the best candidate. And sometimes that's someone with experience and sometimes it's someone in their first year. Um, so I, I don't know how to say ROI other than we, we know we ha, like last year, we hired 12 of our student teachers in the district. Um, we also hire from those universities as well. Um, some years we don't. Pitt State that I'm going to tomorrow, we don't hire a lot of students out of Pitt State. But Pitt State has one of the strongest industrial, and I think it's becoming the only industrial technology teaching program in, in our area. So we might go there for three or four years and not get a teacher. But then if we have an industrial tech opening, if we can get one, that's a big hire for us.
Thank you. Um, that makes sense. Um. Do you have a number for our current vacancy on positions? I don't know if that's something you have in, in your head, but like for classified staff versus non-classified staff?
I can get that for you. I mean, we're fully staffed as teachers except for, um, A, AFJROTC. We're, we're trying to find teachers, it's hard to find right now retired air force. Um, they're, they're highly sought after in a lot of different markets. Um, but we're actively recruiting those, but, uh, other than that, we're good on teachers. Um, and then we can get you the data definitely. Dr. De Vilbys actually spends a lot of time, especially with support staff, um, um, on what those numbers are. We can get those to you.
Okay. Um, I just have a couple more. Sorry guys. Um, I was wondering if, and this is a question for me, but just I guess the, if we can be provided with, um, the numbers of the employees. That actually live within our district boundaries?
We did that maybe two years ago and it was 65%. Um, and I don't know if we've updated since then, but we could do it again, but it was about 65% live within the district boundaries. So we looked at that before we did J E C A.
Okay. And can it, and I don't know if it was, if the previous report did this, but just breaking it down even by classified and non-classified staff, is that possible or no?
Yeah, I think so. We have that in business plus. So, uh, I think it may take us some time to get that, but I think, I think we could probably work with our data systems team to pull that data out.
Okay.
And, and not want to be, so, and, and please know that with HR data, it's always a snapshot in time. So the day we pull it. So on that day we would pull and look at, um, and we might want to do it. So maybe the certified side, non-certi- certificated side or is that kind of what you're thinking?
Yeah, I would like to see if there's a, if, I mean, if there's a differentiation between those two sides.
Okay. Yeah.
That live within our boundaries.
I think we can do that.
Okay. Cool. Um, and my last question is as far as training goes, um, how does, do we have? Our training teams that are hiring, our hiring teams, um, are they provided with unconscious bias training? Um, when it comes to hiring practices?
Yes, just, uh, I can't remember if it was last, two years ago or last year, but we did a, uh, significant training. Um, actually with Shelley Sanders, Dr. De Vilbys and one of our legal teams did a conference training for our hiring managers. Um, so that then they had some skills and information to take back to their hiring teams.
Perfect. And so is that done pretty regularly?
Uh, we, we don't do it every year, um, with all the other trainings, but it's something we'll revisit as we need to. Um, but we don't do it every year.
Thank you so much, Dr. Carlson.
Board Member Haley?
Yeah, thank you, Dr. Carlson. It looks like you guys got a, an amazing program going there. Um, I was reading recently that, uh, it's trending nationwide that fewer people are entering education as a profession. And those numbers are trending downwards, even though demand is going to continue to increase. So it looks like we're probably going to have increased challenges in the, in the near and, and mid, midterm future. What would you, uh, recommend that the board can do to support you and your recruiting practices and retention practices as we see? Uh, perhaps a smaller can, a pool of candidates, uh, going forward to fill these jobs?
So I'm going to answer your question first, then I might editorialize a little bit if that's okay. Um, first thing I would say is, uh, for Lee Summit Schools, protect our brand. Make us, keep it a strong community that people want to live in, work in, teach in. Um, second, I would say pay. Teacher pay, I, that's one thing we look at and that's something we always mindful of that, uh, you know, what, what a person makes, makes a difference. Uh, for them, our strong benefits are another big, uh, retention tool. Cause we have benefits that are much stronger and we dedicate more to benefits. Um, and that, so the, so the pay gets them in the door. So, and we'll, we'll talk about salary. And then I'll talk, Dr. De Vilbys and I will talk about benefits. It's hard to get a person in the door with a benefits conversation unless they're really versed and they have a family. Um, salary gets them in the door, but our benefits program retains people. All the way from medical, dental vision, PDO buyback, um, and then our retirement system benefit.
If I could add to that, so Desi gave some stats, um, a couple of years ago. I think we had a 15-year trend, you're right, of less kids going into college for it. They've said recently that's starting to tick back up, but still significantly less than it was 20 years ago. That's why we reacted with the Grow Your Own program. While we don't rely on first year college, um, hires as like our neighboring districts, uh, do. Most of our neighboring districts probably hire more first year teachers than anything else. We, we hire very few, but we can see as people retire and less people are going into that as a choice. Then we're probably going to have to hire more first year teachers eventually. So that's why we created Grow Your Own program. Our Grow Your Own program is the biggest in Kansas or Missouri. Um, the, I, in fact, I can't find another one bigger than 12, um, per year. And that was in Kansas and more than four per year in Missouri. And we're doing 22 per year. So we have, I think that's an important piece. And I think the Board of Education, when I went to them, I remember I was worried about how much it would cost. I offered 14. And the board says, we want to go bigger and they went, went 22. Um, so it was, that was a very kind of the Board of Education at that point.
So here's my touch of editorial. Uh, a year and a half, two years ago, I would agree with your statement about fewer going into education because that was a fact. Uh, when we talked to our closest partners like UCM, even, uh, Pine Bluff, we are seeing actually more students enroll in education programs in the college level. In the current freshman and sophomore classes, and we're seeing that trend upward more.
Well, the article that I was referencing was the nationwide article. So it wa, it wasn't talking about just the Midwest.
No, and, and I, I think that is probably true nationwide maybe, but we're fortunate that in our region, right around Kansas City and the places we go and the universities we talk to. They're seeing numbers tick up. Yeah.
That's good to know.
Yeah.
Board Member Johnson?
I was just going to say, even with the Grow Your Own program, if we're not taking in those first year students. In my mind, we're invested in the community. So they may go to a neighboring district, but then in five or six years, they come back to Lee Summit because we started with them. So that's how I see that being an investment as well.
And, you know, to build on that, we want to prepare kids for whatever they're going to do. Well, the three Es, right? You love it when I say three. And when Dr. Carlson asks, cause I'm always there when we bring them back in in December over their winter break. He'll ask, tell me about how this program helped you. And they'll talk about how far they are ahead of all their college peers because of the work that Ashley Turner has done in the Grow Your Own program. So, um, even if they don't come back to us, our job is to help every kid become a successful adult. And we've done that with the Grow Your Own program.
Thank you. So recently I went to renew my driver's license and I got to sit next to a woman that was actually, uh, getting her, I guess her CDL so that she could be a bus driver for our district. And so that got me thinking first. I was excited that she was joining the team. Um, but then second, I know we had conversations maybe a little over a year ago or so, I can't recall exactly when. About transportation staff and whether or not we were going to have enough transportation staff to cover our routes. So I was just wondering, um, how are we looking in that regard of, um, today, since I know that's a difficult area to cover?
I am so glad you asked that question.
So the day-to-day routes, you know, thinking of getting, uh, kids to and from school, we're, we're doing, we're doing really well. It's our, uh, specialized routes, you know, our sped routes, great beginnings, you know, that, which was the topic that brought it to the board's attention. Um, 15 to 20% of those routes are laid on a daily basis. And that's, that's a topic that we, um, need, need to, to discuss. I will tell you, um, as we look at that data, we've sat down, uh, Dr. Mathis, myself, Tony Brugula, the director of transportation. We've sat and we've worked and we said, okay, it's this bus and this bus. Can we move this kid, uh, to a different bus and, and then. So we're making adjustments to get that 15 to 20% down to a more acceptable level. Um, so on a day-to-day, we, we try out, we, we transport 12,000 plus kids a day. And for a very high percentage of them, we're getting them to and from school and to their activities without any issue. We've got a pocket in one of our programs that we're really struggling with and something that, uh, we need to discuss.
So if I could help, there's two new board members weren't part of that conversation. So we were, we saw this as a struggle coming. Um, and we had, uh, worked a problem and came up with a solution about outsourcing those special programs. At that time though, the decision was no, let's keep working the problem, but come back to you if we can't fix it. Um, we've been struggling internally. We've talked maybe the last four months about when do we bring it back to the board? Cause we're, keep working the problem, but we keep struggling. It's not going away. So you may see in the future, we may be bringing that back if we can't solve it. Lord knows we're trying to solve it because the board said, try to solve it before we outsource, um, those specialized routes.
I, I will tell you, as I've, I've attended, um, some conferences and, and here recently, uh, both regionally and nationally. Um, third, third-party transportation is becoming more and more part of just the core. Um, process of getting students to and from school. It's every, every major district and probably about every district in the country is having to outsource some or all of their transportation. It is a very common part.
Thank you. So if anybody wants to be a bus driver or teach ROTC, you know who to call. Now I do have, uh, one additional question, um, and you know, even though it kind of regards to pay, so I apologize if, if it's not something that you have, um, information on hand. Um, but there's been a lot of discussions about amendment two and, and what Missouri pays teachers. And you know, they say that Missouri pays teachers very low. And I know that our district pays well. Um, but I was just curious as where we're currently sitting compared to our neighboring districts in regards to pay as a recruitment strategy?
So we're actually in the middle of pulling that data together for Team Lee Summit. And we'll provide that data through the winter to, to the board as well. Um, we know, um, as far as teacher salary schedule, we know we're number one, um, at the end of the salary schedule for our experienced folks. And it, and it's not close. We've got quite a big gap between, um, our neighbors. In the middle and start, I think we were number 10 at the middle and number eight at first year teacher salary. And, uh, we know we're going to move backwards there.
And Dr. Carlson will tell you, there's some neighboring districts just to the west of us. He's never lost out on, I'm offering a first year teacher, uh, contract. They've always said yes in the past. We've had a few this year for the first time. We said, no, because I can make more as a first year teacher, just going a little bit of west of you. So that's a new phenomenon. We'll see if that's a trend. Uh, but it definitely was new this year and notable for Dr. Carlson.
Thank you. Seeing no other questions, say thank you. This concludes our work session.